Yeah, try it. No, it works.
I have six o'clock and we are recording.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, March 3rd, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and a reminder, anybody coming forward, please provide your name and address and speak directly in the microphone as this meeting is being recorded and we are live on Facebook, correct? So, I hope you all put your best makeup on. So with that being said, there are two requested changes to the agenda. We would like to, I would like to make a motion that we move 8B up to follow the Pledge of Allegiance and following 8B, we move up 8A as well. That is the motion I'm recommending. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Netto has seconded the motion moving item 8B up and 8A up following the Pledge of Allegiance in that order. Any other further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. So with that being said, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, with that being said, we are up to item 8B, which is Ordinance 2025-1, creating Chapter 14 regarding the cemetery. And this evening, we have the esteemed presence of Cemetery Director Rodden to carry us through. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for moving me up. After this, I get to go to the National Honor Society banquet, so, thank you.
Well, congratulations on receiving that honor as well.
I would never have received that honor, but my daughter has.
Congratulations to her.
Congratulations.
So, real briefly, Alex, if you could pull up, when you have a second, the actual cemetery map. So just a couple of things to go through before we go into the actual ordinance itself. First and foremost, a huge thank you and appreciation from myself, from Michelle, to Holly and Zach. Zach is on Andy's team, he's one of our engineers, and then Holly obviously works in the office as the...
Deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk, yes. They have put in a lot of work creating what you're seeing on screen right now. When we, when I first stepped into this role, we were looking at old maps, we were trying to figure out where plots were, and it was a huge mess. And what they've been able to do over the last year is simply amazing. It is now all pretty much color-coded. The green dots that you see are trees, and Zach, in his amazing abilities, those trees are actually correct diameter to each one of them, so you can see the big one and, and they, they GIS mapped almost this entire, in fact, they do have the entire thing done. Now they're just working on putting people where they belong, and that's just a painstaking process of looking at headstones versus records, but it's all in a spreadsheet now, so, at the end of the day, I'd love for someone to pull up in the cemetery, be able to take a, what do you call those things, a...
QR code.
QR code, thank you, and pull this map up, so they can find their loved one, type in their loved one's name, and be able to get the general idea where their loved one is located. So, it's definitely come a long ways here in the last year. So just a couple of brief things. In 2024, we sold 24 plots. We brought in a total of $10,175 in revenue from those 24 plots. Already this year, we hit new plot sales totaling 1,200 underneath the new fee schedule. And then, right now, as the cemetery currently sits, we have 158 estimated plots available. And why I say estimated is, there are sections of this cemetery that are kind of messy when it comes to the actual rows versus what's available, and so that's something that we're working through right now, trying to figure out what rows go where and, and, you know, where do we stop a row and those kind of things. So we have 128 conflicted lots, and what a conflicted lot is, is a plot with a tree on it, a plot that, there's some, if you scroll up just a little bit, Alex. So here, you're looking at, where it says Swamaco Cemetery Map, that's Riverside, and if you just scroll up to the bottom of that map...
To the bottom?
To the bottom, sorry. You know, there's some, there's some, yeah, right about there. So there's some areas where those turnarounds are, where we're trying to figure out, you know, should we sell those plots or shouldn't we? So, obviously, your closed plots on this legend is, are conflicted plots, and those are ones, obviously, because trees, again, are in the way. So Holly actually came up with an idea, or maybe it was Zach, one of the two, that some of these plots with trees on them can, we can still put cremains in them. So we could sell them at half price and still be able to put cremains in them. You can't put a full body because you can't dig it, but you can get down deep enough to the level that we need to, to be able to put cremains in. So that was a great idea, we're looking into that. That's something that we're going to be doing here in the next cemetery meeting, looking at a few of these conflicted areas where we can put some additional plots. Because if we did that, if we, if we had 79 plots at, at half price, you know, depends on if it's a resident or non-resident, that's another $24,000 to $48,000 worth of revenue coming in to our, to our village or to the cemetery. Little bit more interesting information, and then this comes from Holly, just because of their, their research, we have 318 plots, estimated, with no headstones. 255 of those do have remains in them, 63 of them do not. So we're trying to figure out, again, you know, making sure that there's no remains in them, but secondly, you know, making sure we have all the owners and we know who the owners are. So again, over this last year, they have done a substantial amount of work going off the old records and, and creating, A, this, this map, but, but B, really organizing the cemetery as a whole. So, again, hats off to those guys. Last week, we had our first winter burial, in which Andy's team actually bought some new equipment to be able to thaw, because as you can imagine, this time of year is very difficult to get through that frost layer, and they have some new equipment that hits up to a propane tank, a portable propane tank, and heats the area so they can actually dig the grave, because it was a full, full burial. And would it take about 12 hours?
Yeah, it was less than a full day, and we had about 26 inches of frost that we went through. Yeah, we welded, or we made it, actually Jason welded it, rather than buying it, we just bought the metal and welded it up. Pretty neat-looking operation.
Yeah, if you ever care to, to see this contraption, reach out to Andy, it's, it's pretty unique. But that went as smooth as can be.
Yep.
So, that's actually going to add more revenue into the cemetery itself versus outsourcing that work. We can keep that work in-house moving forward, as long as that system works as it should. So, that's really all I have as far as just an update. We're continuing to work in on this map, get it better. We really haven't looked out into that field at all, because there's no need to, because we have so many plots available in the cemetery itself. The next thing that we'd really look at is cremation garden of some sort, and we thought about putting it in that first, if you slide down just a little bit, or slide up, I'm sorry. We, we talked about moving a little bit further, just to the first roundabout, or the first loop.
A little bit more.
A little bit more. A little more. Oh, that's good, that's good enough. That worked.
It's like a four-second delay, so tell me to move up, I'm already moved up.
All right, so, right above Section 5, that first loop, we thought about adding that area as a, as a cremation garden and taking that loop out of there, but as a committee, we decided kind of to leave it as is. There is a great area way up in front of the cemetery to be able to basically grid off an area where we can put cremains only. Stats tell us that about 75 to 70, or 70 to 75% of people now are being cremated versus whole body, so it makes sense to get into that market and be able to sell more plots. And these plots would end up being, and you've seen it, and you'll see it in the ordinance, you know, 12 by 12 or, or 18 by 12, there's going to be some sort of dimension that we come up with depending on the area. So Zach's already laid out several different options for the committee, and eventually that'll be coming back to you guys. So, that's all I have. As far as the ordinance is the second reading, I don't have anything unless somebody else does.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, I noticed all of the edits were put through. I just had one question with regard to the headstone or the two flat markers. Did the committee talk about whether or not that should be or or and with the markers?
We have not, we haven't met since the last reading.
Okay.
So, we're going to leave it as is, in my opinion, for now.
Okay.
And if we need to make a wording change, we can make a wording change down there.
Okay.
But I'm not overly concerned about it, even if I'm not in this position, let's say a year from now, you know, the next person, it's just, there's a lot of, I don't want to say gray area, but discretionary, and when it comes to even size of stones and stuff like that. So I think, as long as it looks fitting, you know, we'll abide by the ordinance and make sure the ordinance is met, but, you know, and/or, if someone really wants to put something level to the ground, and it's not protruding, so we have to go around it, our biggest thing is work for Andy's crew. So if they can mow over it, you know, there's not a, a big issue there, as long as it's not gaudy or...
As long as you don't see that the ordinance would prevent somebody from having a marker for them, that, I don't have an issue.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, I wanted to present the question.
Correct, thank you. You know, obviously, military, you know, you want to make sure that they have their appropriate markers and then be able to have a personalized marker as well, so, yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
I don't want to nitpick again, but the, the map, the cemetery is spelled with an A, do you want that to be an E?
In the map itself?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I've never looked at the top of the map.
I guess I missed that, too.
It's not, it's not in the ordinance itself?
I don't think so.
No, just on the map itself?
On the map.
Oh, interesting. Thank you for catching that.
I'll make a note. I don't even know if it's wrong, or if it can be two ways, or at least it's consistent, then.
I, I agree with you. I've always seen it with an E.
Anyone with anything else? Is there further discussion on the second reading of the ordinance? Do we need to go through that? No? Okay. If there is no additional discussion on the second reading of the ordinance or questions for Director Rodden or, or staff, I would look for a motion on this. I, I can offer a motion, I would offer a motion to approve Ordinance 2025, creating Chapter 14 of the Swamaco Municipal Code regarding the cemetery as proposed.
Second.
Thank you, I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any other further questions or discussions from the board? Very well, hearing none, we need a roll call on this?
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, and thanks for moving me up again.
Have a good evening.
Go have a chicken dinner.
Good for you. All right, we're, we're moving forward and we're moving back at the same time. Item 8A is a request by MBA Holdings LLC to amend a developer's agreement. Minister Kaker, if you would.
Thank you. So the village entered into a development agreement with MBA Holdings in December of 2021. The agreement is within TID 1 and is related to the expansion project of RC Mowers on East Deerfield Avenue. The developer is requesting an amendment to the development agreement to allow for the sale and leaseback of the building while retaining the ability to collect on the incentive payments. Prior to having the village attorney draft an amendment, I wanted to ensure the village board had the opportunity to understand the request and provide any comments or questions. Michael Brant, who is MBA Holdings, is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have, as well as expanding on the actual request. The board may also wish to grant the request contingent on the developer reimbursing the village for any attorney fees, similar to how we handled the four-way amendment last year. And then a copy of the development agreement and the email that Michael Brant submitted was included in your packets. So with that, I think I'll hand it over to Mr. Brant to elaborate on your request and then open it up to any questions or comments from the board.
Certainly, thank you for having me, glad to be back here, but under simpler terms than previously. So as, as Alex had mentioned, we're currently pursuing a deal where there would be a, a sale-leaseback of the building, which essentially takes the building ownership from me personally through my holding company and to, to another developer, and what that essentially allows me to do is to free up the equity that is in the building, because I had to put substantial, well over a million dollars into the building to, to create it. And that frees up that capital for business operations. It's a, it's a fairly common thing that businesses do, especially in our situation, we're quite a high-tech business, and it takes a lot of money to invest, hire employees, and so it's a, it's just a common business thing that we're doing. What currently, right now, the, the terms of that deal would, would be what's called triple net, which means that the leaseholder would continue to pay the taxes, and that's essentially me again, through RC Mowers as the company. We'd be looking at signing a 15-year lease with two five-year extensions with the, with the holding company. It will continue to be a single tenant lease, so as far as from the outside, there would be nothing different, nobody would know anything other than some, the legal, the legal ownership of the, the real estate. Now, as far as the, as far as the developer agreement, I got to this point of, of making an arrangement with this company, and I had not looked closely enough into the developer agreement, and after some further research, realized that the, the incentives that were provided in order for us to build on that very expensive piece of property out on the highway, it goes with the land, and I thought it would, incorrectly thought it stayed with the holding company. And so when the, when I put this deal together, that was not a consideration. And so rather than go back to that deal and sort of open it up and try to adjust it, I thought I would just ask the committee here if, if they were amenable to adjusting this so that, that when the, when the taxes are paid, the incentives would continue to come back to MBA Holdings, rather than move with the land to the new land, to the new owner. And that's, that's the simplicity of the request, it's, taxes will still be paid, RC Mowers is still there, I'm still at work 12 hours a day plus, so none of that stuff would change.
Are there questions for Mr. Brant? I mean, this is a pretty common practice, so, I don't see any issues with it.
It doesn't hurt us financially.
No. It's a business, it's a business arrangement. Okay, so no additional questions? Any additional comments, Mr. Brant?
The timing on this, you said, has to be completed, we'd have to approve it tonight for this to accommodate your close schedule?
No, no, you would, I, I wanted to get in tonight in case there were questions or there's other things we had to do, or if you said, hey, we're not, we don't know if we want to do this, we're not sure, because this deal is expected to close by the end of this, end of March, I wanted to make sure we had sufficient timing. If there was objection, or if there was special things that had to happen, I needed time to recover so that I don't interfere with the closing of the building, or of the sale of the building.
So the only piece of this is attorney's fees? Mm-hmm. So if there's any, you know, direction on this, what, what are the attorney fees we're talking about?
I'm not sure exactly, but I couldn't imagine it to be more than a couple hours of attorney's time.
Are you okay with covering that with this amendment, so that it doesn't get...
Right, it's, it's $72 an hour, is that...
Something like that, plus or minus a couple hundred.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, that's reasonable for, I, I don't want to put the village out of any, any funds for an arrangement that primarily is benefiting for convenience for, for myself, so I would, I would absorb those attorney fees.
Thank you.
As long as they're, it's simple and reasonable.
Okay. All right, any other questions or discussion? Otherwise, let's entertain a motion. I guess, do we need a motion on this?
Is, is that a motion to bring something back, or how does that work?
Well, I mean, as long as there's no objection, I don't think that you really need a motion.
Okay.
But I did, did want to get some direction from the board.
So, so the direction, I, I believe we're in agreement from the board with the, with the detail here, which is to move, move, a move to direct staff to collaborate, let's just do a motion. I'm going to offer a motion to direct staff to collaborate with the village attorney on drafting an amendment to the development agreement with MBA Holdings LLC. Is there a second?
Second. The attorney fees.
Including MBA Holdings, thank you for that, including MBA Holdings LLC picking up the attorney costs.
I'll second it. Give it to him.
A second from Trustee Andrews, since he corrected me. All right, any other further discussion or questions? All right, let's do a roll call on this one, too.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero.
Excellent.
So we'll get working on this right away, and you'll see something back on the March 17th.
Great, thank you for your time, I appreciate you helping me out with that.
Glad to, glad to help. Thanks for keeping your business here.
Well, there's, the idea is to hire additional people, so we're, we're looking at expanding, so that's, this, this gives us the opportunity to do that.
Terrific.
Hope to continue doing that.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's go back, going back to, we do not have any presentations, as I understand it.
Correct.
So we are off to item number six, which is public appearances. So public appearances are for anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. If you are here for an item on the agenda, we'll do everything possible to give you an opportunity to speak to it. Now is your time, though, for any item that you wish to speak to not on the agenda. Is there anyone here to speak to an item not on the evening's agenda? Okay. See, no one. Consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda consists of previous minutes of the village board dated February 17th, 2025, and Item B, January 2025 Animal Control Report. Are there questions, discussion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Eckert has offered a motion to approve the evening's consent agenda, that has been seconded by Trustee Romes. Looking for any last-minute questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the evening's consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you. All right, item 8C this evening is Resolution 25002, reducing the speed limit on West Point Road from 45 to 35 miles per hour, and we have the, we have DEO Kezick here.
Yes, sir. So as you guys see in your packets, we had our traffic DEO, Deputy Budry, go out and put up our signs for study. We did eastbound and westbound during the dates of January 28th to February 12th. As you can see, we reached the 85th percentile going eastbound at 33.08 miles per hour with a vehicle count of 119, and 85th percentile going westbound at 34.3 miles per hour with a vehicle count of 645 during those respective times. So we would recommend to you that the reduction would be, following this, would be in, in line, and we would recommend the, the reduction to 35 miles per hour.
Okay. Other questions for DEO Kezick? Anyone? Okay. I guess we would look for a motion, unless, is there anyone, do we need to open this up for public discussion? Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? We'll need a motion, we, nope, no one. Okay, so we just need a motion to approve or deny Resolution 25002.
I'll offer a motion.
Please do.
Offer motion to approve Resolution 25002.
Thank you.
The reduction of the speed limit on West Point Road from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Trustee McKeefry has offered a motion to approve the Resolution 25002, reducing the speed limit. That has been seconded by Trustee Romes. Any other further questions or discussion from the board? None. All right, very well, let's do this as a roll call.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we're off to Item 8D this evening, which is Ordinance 2025-2, amending Chapter 11.23, Keeping of Dangerous, Potentially Dangerous Dogs Regulated. DEO Kezick, if you would.
So, I understand this has been brought to the Health and Safety Board and was read in or approved to change or add, I'm sorry, print the D, any dog that reaches a Level 4 on the Dunbar Dog Bite Scale for dog-to-human incidents, or a Level 4 on the Shannon Scale for dog-to-other animal incidents, and I believe you have both scales within your packets. Would you like me to go over the different levels or anything of that nature?
Okay. Are there any questions? This is a first reading, any questions or discussions on these, discussion on these items? It's only a first reading, so this is the opportunity to look for any changes. Hearing none? Okay. Thank you for bringing this forward, and thank you for the work on it and the additional notes. We'll look forward to the second reading. All right, continuing on, we are off to Item Number 9 this evening. Item 9, Finance Items, is discussion on Tax Incremental Finance District Number 2 Closure. Director Demany.
All right, so Tax Incremental Financing District Number 2 was created August 21st of 2006, with a termination date of August 21st of 2026. The district encompasses the Swamaco Industrial Park, Vickery Village, and West Deerfield Business Park. The base equalized value at the time of formation was $9,499,500. The equalized value on January 1 of 2024 was $33,094,900. Financially, the district has accumulated an excess fund balance of $624,000 as of December 31st, 2024. The final major expenditures of the district include two state trust fund loan payments to be made by March 20, 2025, and March 2026 totaling about $290,000. The district is able to pay the, pay the March 26 payment early, which will be completed prior to the final TID audit that's required, and as well as the subsequent payments to the other taxing jurisdictions. According to state statute, the excess funds are returned based on each taxing jurisdiction's portion of the total tax rate. So the tax rate for this closure would be from the 2024 levy proportions without the tax increment. So based on the current value of the TID and the remaining expenditures, we're proposing to close TID 2 a year early. The memo today is for informational purposes only, the formal resolution for the closure will be presented in two weeks at the next meeting.
When was this TID? When was, so at the time of formation, what was the formation date?
It was formed August 21st of 2006.
2006? Did I, I missed that, it's right on top, sorry, should have seen that. That's a, that's a hefty return on investment. Great. Are there any disadvantages to closing this early?
No, everything is paid or will be paid, and there's enough funding to do so. The disadvantage would, to ever close early would be if all your debts weren't paid.
Okay.
But we're at a point that we can cover everything, so we can close it the year early.
Okay.
Is there advantages that when you close early for in the future? Do they view us differently, being able to financially support some of the...
Um, I think it, I think it depends on each type of district and where it's at, if there's a full advantage or not. This one, there wasn't, it didn't really matter if we did it this year or next year, and so it helps us and the other districts to just close it early.
Thanks for doing this a meeting before, because then it kind of gives you that heads up. I always like that.
The real, the real factors of this move is going to be the other taxing entities, because instead of another year... of another year of their tax increment revenue going into the TID, it's going back to those taxing entities. So those entities will be happy that we're closing it early.
Okay.
Is there a communication that goes out to them to, so they recognize this?
They'll know, it'll be something we talk about at the annual joint review board meeting in July. It'll be brought up. And at this point, I don't have dollar amounts or anything of that. Kind of goes through the final audit to get final numbers to send.
Okay. Terrific. All right, let's move on to item number ten. Item number ten is the fire, fire department items. We have item ten A, which is a change order for tender twelve eleven and twelve twenty-one. Chief Bertler.
Thank you. A few months back, the village board decided to refurbish the tenders, saving approximately six hundred thousand dollars in the future. Pierce Manufacturing, the, brought the mechanics, actual mechanics that are going to work on the truck up for a visit to our station. The two gentlemen that were there kind of got under the truck and took some pictures and kind of gave it a better once-over of what needed to be done. As a result, there were two items from the original quote or estimate that were not in there, and that would be to replace, basically modifications, in essence, replacing all the wiring for the electrical and warning systems. By the end of this lifetime, hopefully it's, you know, last another fifteen years, twenty years, maybe forty year of wiring that truck. Already had problems with engine twelve eleven, which is twenty years old, the wiring in that truck, so they recommend changing the wiring out. And then installing a internal valve on, in the tank to reduce stress on the tank. So currently, actually, both tanks, there are lifetime warranties on them, but are cracked. So what they're going to do is actually take the tank out, send it to the manufacturer of the tank, and then put it back in. So, good thing that we caught that, but, so they'll both be, except there are lifetime warranties on that, but they'll be fixing that and bringing, they recommended putting an internal valve on there to reduce the stress from, to make it not crack again, so. If you have any questions, I brought Captain Ward and Lieutenant Lee Joyce with me, they're more of the mechanics, electrical people than I am, so if you have any questions, I direct some of that technical stuff to them, so. So in essence, there is, the change order would be for thirteen thousand four hundred ninety-two on each truck, bringing a total change order, if we decide to go that way, to twenty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars.
Do we know, so this is following the inspection by Pierce?
Correct.
So as far as we know, everything has been now captured.
Correct, yep. Yeah, so the initial estimate, they kind of went around and peeked a little bit on their truck. The two gentlemen, and we knew there might be a little difference in things, the two gentlemen came up there, the ones that actually worked on it, and spent a good half a day underneath there and taking pictures and kind of doing a nice, I guess, once-over on it, you know, themselves, so. Recommended these two changes, so. Like I was, there shouldn't be any more change orders.
So, so in support of trustee Eckert, you don't see any other surprises coming?
No, no. They, they, they're the ones that, we didn't even know, they're the ones that found the cracks in the tank, the original time, we never knew that there was cracks in there. So they went through that, that truck in and out, and spent a good, like I said, half a day on that, so. I would, I would hope and pray that by them taking that much time, that they pretty much caught everything, so.
Are there other questions for you?
It's a refurb, I mean, we might as well do it right.
Hopefully it lasts fifteen to twenty years, so.
So instead of saving six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, now it's.
Five hundred and seventy.
Five seventy.
I don't think I can support that. Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no additional questions, we need a motion on this to approve or deny the change order from Pierce Manufacturing in the dollar amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve the change order from Pierce Manufacturing for the dollar amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Trustee Romes has made the motion of approval in the amount of twenty-six thousand nine eighty-four, and that has been seconded by trustee McKeefry. Any other further questions, discussion, comments from the board? Hearing none, let's, well, this is, there is a financial expenditure here, so let's do this as a roll call.
Absolutely. Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, item ten B this evening is a change order for engine twelve eleven. Chief Bertler, back to you.
Thank you. So in April of two thousand and twenty-three, the village board approved the purchase of the new engine twelve eleven. Last, well, in January of this year, we went down to kind of do the final drawings, final layout of the truck, and a few changes were made that we, we kind of do go through a truck, they kind of give you some general things and where buttons might be placed and valves and that kind of stuff, so we made a few changes. We took some, as you see in, on the spreadsheet, there's a few deletions as well, but a few additions. Obviously, cost increased a little bit as well, so. Came up a price increase of, I think it was like sixteen thousand, a little over sixteen thousand. We went through our, another meeting with our, just our truck committee last month, and went through the list again, took out a few items that we felt we could probably either get maybe cheaper or take off our old truck, so that's why there's three items highlighted in yellow that we took off, saving a little bit more money. But as a result, the increase was for eleven thousand ninety dollars. And once again, Captain Ward was down with that meeting down at Pierce. A lot of these things are just where buttons are placed, some finishing type stuff, nothing major in the overall price of the truck for nine hundred and fourteen thousand. There's, they said, when you kind of come down with the final inspection of what you want, there was always a little change order here or there, so. Grand scheme of things, it's, it's more money, but, like I said, when you come, when you find to the final layout of the truck, we try to, try to be conservative in, you know, was it a want or a need, and these are things that we felt we needed versus the one, and we said, took those three items out figuring we can, we can try to save some money by doing it ourselves. One of the things is install of the radios that Brent's gonna, Brent's gonna do, and then some other items as well, so.
What's the life expectancy of a fire engine like this?
They say fifteen years. We currently have twenty years on our engine twelve eleven that we're placing, and talked to Scott, it's, it's a, we're band-aiding it. We, hopefully we get this engine in October, November. We actually placed ours after Little Swamaco placed their engine, we're actually getting ours before, because this is more of a cookie cutter engine. Unfortunately, these prices are just, they're astronomical, I mean, and, you know, had we bought this thing two years ago, it would've been in the six hundreds, seven hundreds.
Remember those conversations?
Yeah.
And that's another thing that, to the effort of that six hundred thousand that was saved. That goes a long ways into beating back the pain we suffered by that major increase, so.
Yeah. But yeah, the current engine twelve eleven, we band-aid right now, it's, hopefully it lasts another seventy months, so. The electrical, talking about going back, the electrical system on that and the gauges and it's, hopefully we get this new one soon.
Put the old one up for sale.
That's right. I don't know if there's any questions, Captain Ward or Lieutenant Lee Joyce could help answer as well, so.
Did you say that you were going to be doing some other type of furnishing on the mic, the two-way?
Uh, no, Captain Ward is going to install that. One of the things that we took out was install customers, the second one, line seventeen.
Line seventeen, I just, it seems like it might be important, so.
Yeah. I think that was eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Captain Ward's going to install that, we can, we have to tear apart the truck a little bit when he comes back to install some of our stuff, so, I'm just kind of felt that we could save that money by doing it ourselves.
Okay, so we won't be without that then?
No, no.
Okay, perfect, that was just my question.
Okay.
Well, if there's no other discussion, I'd be happy to offer a motion.
Please do.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the change order from Pierce Manufacturing in the amount of eleven thousand ninety dollars and zero cents.
So there has been a motion introduced by trustee Romes to approve the change order from Pierce Manufacturing in the amount of eleven thousand ninety dollars for the additions to engine twelve eleven, a new engine. Is there a second?
A second.
And we have a second from trustee Netto. Any other further questions or discussion for the gentlemen here tonight?
Just thank you for all your hard work and going through all the details like that, so.
Agreed, thank you for your diligence.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of approving this?
I'll take a.
Roll call, yes.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We have to run, we have a training at our station, so we apologize, but.
Just taking the money and running.
Sorry, we did.
Get out while you can.
You can drive by the station, there's cars there, so. Thank you.
Okay, fair enough. Take care. All right, we are going to item eleven A, this is a public hearing, so item eleven A is the modification to the PDD on SU one seven four dash five for S Sonnenben Properties LLC. The property is zoned rural residential with PDD and is located on the northwest corner of Velp Avenue and Lost Trail, zoning administrator Dunks.
Thank you, we are looking at a, just over, well, about a two-point-three acre property here. When this was originally done as a planned development, it was for four duplexes on, on four separate lots via CSM. They are now taking one of the lots, which was oversized. The reason they stayed at four was because if they went to five lots, it would've been considered a subdivision, and it was easier to do a four lot CSM. I don't know if the intent was always to split it or not, but they would like to split it now and do one additional duplex, so we felt we needed to modify that planned development to go from four duplexes to five on this piece of property. Your planning and zoning did recommend approval of that change to the PDD. Thank you.
Okay. Are there questions for zoning administrator Dunks on this item?
Steve, do you want to just mention to the board just where the driveways were when we had this discussion where they were going to talk about putting driveways?
That would be part of the CSM, right now I'm, I just addressed the PDD, because that's what's up for public hearing.
Why? Why another duplex?
Because they can. They're hoping they can, they got this, they have the land area to do it. Why would be up for Mr. Sonnenben to address? I can't tell you what his intent is.
Why?
You, yeah, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and providing your name and address. Thank you.
Scott Sonnenben, twenty-seven ninety-five Stone Creek Circle, Swamaco. Why, I guess, when we originally did the CSM, we divided it into four parcels, just because we could do it as a CSM instead of a plat. I did leave the south lot larger, because I thought at a later point, maybe I or somebody else might want to split it. As long as we maintained the fifty thousand square feet and a hundred and fifty feet of road frontage, I saw it as a feasible possibility. I did have that lot for sale for more money than the northern lots. I have a buyer, I do have an accepted offer on it, buyer wants to buy two duplex lots and build two duplexes as part of the ten thirty-one exchange, so. The reason we're doing it is for financial purposes, I mean, he gets lots cheaper and makes sense.
I believe we do have, is it lot three? Just to the north of this, or is it lot four that's actually going to build a single family home? So one of those four duplexes is actually not going to take place. I believe his intent is.
Correct.
For a single family home.
And which direction is that?
Just to the north, one of the four, lot three of the original four.
On Velp, yeah. Really, a single family?
Yep.
Okay.
It is sold, it has changed hands, and we've had discussion, I've had discussion with him.
Sure.
I don't know if he pulled the driveway permit while I was on vacation or not, but he was going to pull a driveway permit to get access, so he could at least maintain the grass and stuff, but his intent is a single family home. I mean, I guess he could change that later on, but that, as of currently, right now, the intent is one single family home in there, of the original four, so.
Great. Okay. Other questions?
Just a clarification, so I better understand it, so what is the, so there's an advantage at the time to do four duplexes, because you wouldn't have to plant it as a subdivision? Is that correct? Did I understand?
Correct, if you had, if you did, if you did five lots, it's considered a subdivision.
Which does what, though?
Creates more, you got to send it into the state and whatnot, there's more that's entailed in doing a subdivision plat as opposed to a simple CSM.
Do we add more hoops as a village?
We don't add any more hoops.
Okay, all right, so to.
Well, they've got to go through the preliminary plat and the final plat, whereas the CSM is just.
Okay.
A one, typically one time through the.
Clever way of avoiding the red tape of going up through that whole process, maybe. That's what I'm kind of hearing. I was, that's, that's good enough, thank you.
Okay.
It, it is avoiding some of that. Typically, there's a rule that as developer, I can only divide it into, divide that property once in, into four lots inside of five years, so after five years, I could divide it again anyway. If it changes hands, the new buyer can divide it at any point, but actually, the buyer contacted the county, and the county said that this was only divided three times, because there are three property lines, so there's one more division that's allowed, so that's how it all came about. This actually is the buyer's, buyer's idea, more so than in his mind at this point, so.
I, I just found it interesting, I'm not sure even why the state has that law or that rule, but we don't, and that's what I was after.
Other questions? Just real quick, zoning administrator Dunks, so as I'm reading this right now, there are two motions that are necessary for this item eleven A, do I have that correct?
There's one motion required for the.
Sure, the public hearing.
Would be eleven B.
Okay.
You're going to close the public, you're going to open the public hearing.
Yep.
You're going to close the public hearing, and then you're going to go to eleven B for action on the PDD, and then we'll go to eleven C for discussion on the actual CSM.
With, with you here as our guide, I'm sure we won't go wrong. Perfect.
You did that right, Steve, good job.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else here who wishes to speak on this item? It is a public hearing, so you're entitled to come forward and share any thoughts that you have on this. Okay. No one wishes to speak on this, so I would like to, we have to go through the first motion before closing the public hearing.
No, no motion, you just close the hearing and then you move on to eleven B.
So we don't need a motion on the modification of the PDD?
That will be eleven B.
That would be eleven B.
That is eleven B, okay.
You need to, as the chair, close the public hearing.
Thank you. I got it.
And then move on to eleven B.
All right, thank you. So we are closing the public hearing, do I need a motion to do that?
No.
Thank you. I didn't think so, just was checking, things are getting a little blurry right now. Okay. Moving on, so we have two motions that are required. The first motion is to approve or deny the modification of the PDD on SU one seventy-four dash five, allowing for the additional duplex. Is there a motion on this item? I would offer a motion to approve the modification to the PDD on SU one seventy-four dash five, allowing for the additional duplex. Is there, and I have a second from trustee Romes. Very good, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Aye, and those opposed?
Nay.
We have one against, so motion carries six to one. Okay, then we go on to item number two, which is to approve or deny a two-lot certified survey map for S Sonnenben Properties LLC as prepared by Cormac A. McGinnis Surveying LLC with the following conditions. A, note on the CSM, the driveway location restrictions as follows. One, Lost Trail from the westerly property corner east one hundred and seventy feet, and two, Velp Avenue from the northerly property corner south one hundred and sixty-five feet. And item B, meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Would anyone like to offer a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the two-lot certified survey map for S Sonnenben Properties LLC as prepared by Cormac A. McGinnis Surveying LLC with the following conditions. A, note on the CSM, the driveway location restrictions as follows. Lost Trail from the westerly property corner east one hundred and seventy feet, and Velp Avenue from the northerly property corner, south corner, one hundred and sixty-five feet. And B, meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and agencies.
We have a motion to approve from Trustee Andrews, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I had a second, I believe, from way over on the end, from Trustee Stevens. Any other further discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Very good. Okay, moving on, we are off to item eleven D, a preliminary plat of Golden Acres. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Thank you, when the original Sheedy Farms came through, this remnant portion that this plat's going to be on was left due to stormwater issues and whatnot, it was attached to what, I believe, I'm not sure if that was, I think it was Lot Eight of the original Sheedy Farms plat. They are now worked through those, hopefully, issues, and they are going to plot it back out with a different developer. We are looking at ten point three eight acre parcel here, it is zoned rural residential. The preliminary plat is showing seven buildable lots with one outlot. The stormwater plan has not been completed yet, but we do expect Outlot One to be that stormwater, for stormwater purposes, and we would ask that that be dedicated to the public if that is the case. All lots do appear to meet the requirements of rural residential zoning. Sewer and water and/or water is not available at this time, and no plans have been made for any of the extensions of those services to this or any surrounding areas. Lot Three and Five show increased building setbacks to meet the lot with at the building setback requirements per code, those are on the cul-de-sac. It's possible that the outlot will not need to be as large as what's there right now, and they're hoping to reduce the frontage of that and shift Lot Two over a little bit and possibly be able to widen the frontage on Lots Three and shift everything to, to reduce that maybe to the original forty-five foot building setback, but until the stormwater plan is done, they can't do that, so this is just the preliminary, those shifts wouldn't be a substantial change, it would be allowed at final if that's how it works out. Developers agreement will also be needed for the completion of Golden Court and any stormwater needs prior to the signing of the final plat. Planning Commission did recommend approval with the four conditions, completion and approval of the stormwater plan, approval and signing of a developers agreement, the fourteen, or yeah, fourteen hundred dollar administrative fees due at signing, and then meeting all other requirements. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there questions for Zoning Administrator Dunks on this item? No? Then we would just look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Golden Acres with the following conditions. One, completion and approval of a stormwater plan. Two, approval and signing of a developers agreement. Three, payment of the one thousand four hundred dollar administrative fee, and four, meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Thank you, Trustee Romes. Trustee Romes has offered a motion to approve with the conditions as stated, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any other further questions, discussions, or comments on this item? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, we are off to item eleven E. Eleven E this evening is a two-lot certified survey map for Kevin J. and April B. White Revocable Trust of two thousand twenty-four for SU one two one, a, as prepared by TNT Professional Surveyors. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Thank you, we are looking at a thirty-three-plus acre site here. It is zoned rural residential, currently, it's in ag use. Most of your properties are either rural residential or ag farmland preservation. It is in a location shown to remain rural based on the future land use, which then would require the two acre greater lots, the lots do meet that. Along with the frontage on Oakdale Lot Two, also has frontage on the dedicated portion of Deer Run Court. Currently, Deer Run Court is not improved to village standards, it's the driveway accessing the white property, the white home in the southwest corner of, of this forty. There is no intent right now to build anything on Lot Two, it's, the main purpose of this is for Lot One, but we just wanted it noted that prior to any driveway permit approval or request for Deer Run Court, that Deer Run Court would need to be improved to village standards. We don't need it at the signing of the CSM or anything like that, it's only if they intend to pull a driveway permit for a home to be constructed, you know, whether it's five years or ten years on Lot Two without any further division that would trigger any of this, we just wanted it noted for the future. Planning Commission did recommend approval with that condition of that developer agreement should they want to pull a driveway permit to Deer Run Court. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for Zoning Administrator Dunks on this item? No?
I'll make the motion then to approve a two-lot certified survey map for Kevin J. and April B. White Revocable Trust of two thousand twenty-three as prepared by TNT Professional Surveyors with the following conditions. Developers agreement for the proper construction of Deer Run Court shall be required prior to approval of any driveway slash access permit to Deer Run Court for Lot Number Two, and the second condition is to meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Very good. Trustee Romes has offered a motion of approval with the conditions as stated, is there a second to Trustee Romes's motion?
A second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews to Trustee Romes's motion. Any other further discussion, questions, or comments on this item from the board? Very well, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Very good. I hope it wasn't too exciting for anyone here this evening. All right, moving on. Item number twelve this evening is the Public Works item, contract S two five zero one, two thousand twenty-five roadway reconstruction project using funds from the Road Reconstruction Fund. Director Smith, best for last.
Yeah, thank you. All right, village staff prepared plans and specs for the S twenty-five oh one contract. We opened bids on February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five at one P M. here at the Municipal Service Center. We did include a copy of the bid tab for your review. We had two contractors that normally bid on our road projects, Northeast Asphalt and MCC. Northeast Asphalt came in at a total bid price of one million three hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and fifteen cents, edging MCC by a little bit this year. The project does include a couple of developer-funded projects, and I kind of broke it out to, so you guys can see where the funds will be charged to, so not everything out of that one point three will be charged to the Road Reconstruction Fund. Our budget for the year was one million fifty-nine thousand and fifty-two dollars. After we deduct the excess charges from the overall contract, we should be around one million twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-five and ninety cents. We'll tack on our village engineering time for that, and that should put us really close to the one million sixty thousand that we have. So tonight, we'd be looking at approval of contract S twenty-five zero one to Northeast Asphalt for one million three hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifteen cents.
I have just one question on this, any recommendations? So as we look at this, the budgeted amount for two thousand twenty-five road project was one million fifty-nine thousand, we're over that budget, obviously, and obviously costs have increased. Is there something else driving this, or, or is there something? I guess what I'm asking is, as we move into budgeting for roads going forward, is there some other change in the formulation that we need to look at to zero in?
So we, you know, the, the project came in at one point three, but if you deduct the charges for the developers.
Sunny Meadows.
Sunny Meadows and the forty, or thirty-two thousand for Windrush, and then we charge stormwater for the infrastructure or the culverts or storm sewer that are part of the project, when we charge the sanitary sewer account for the manhole adjustments and.
I get it.
Internal, external seals that we put on. So after you break out those items, the actual charge to the Road Reconstruction Fund bid price will be one million twenty-eight thousand, so under the one sixty, but once we add in our engineering for our staff time, it's usually in that twenty-five to thirtieth range, will put us close to the one point.
So is there any way, is there any way for us to build a contingency in our, our road reconstruction budget? And we're getting this paid back, this is all, this is all great, but just for planning purposes?
We do, we do have a road reconstruction fund balance, we use a lot of it for the Lineville Road project, I'm not sure exactly where that.
Okay.
It's over three hundred thousand that we do have available in a fund, if there's an emergency that comes up and you got to do some roadwork, we did that. When we had some flooding on Sunset Beach Road, we used twenty-seven thousand to raise a bit of the road using that Road Reconstruction Fund. And then just for everyone's identification, this has been a standing practice forever, we will bid out our road construction work along with any developer project to give them a better price and to lower their cost because of the economies of scale. That's why you see that one point three is, yeah, over our budget, but as Andy stated, a lot of that is coming off, it's not really a cost to the village.
Sure. Okay.
I recall during the budgeting season, Andy had shared kind of how we go about kind of assessing roads, and, and I assume there's a condition report, but then I, I was kind of fascinated by the fact you tried to kind of bundle up. And this map is nice, and, but I'm kind of wondering, when you, proximity, that seems like they're kind of all over the place now, is it more about the wear and tear of the road that's really driving these decisions?
Yeah, overall condition, I mean, so just so everybody understands, the Public Works Utility Committee, we every fall take a road tour, we call it, and we go out and drive all the roads that are rated one through fours or so, and, you know, they're the ones that make that final decision on what roads are included. So we, we try to group them up and put them in areas that are close, because you save on your mobilization of them guys moving their equipment around and moving all over the village, but at some point, you just can't really get everything to fit. You know, a lot of it's, we try to stick to our budget, obviously, and to fit roads that have numbers that fit within that range is challenging, because each road poses different items that add or delete money from their estimate. So we try to use road condition number one, because we're trying to replace the roads that were, you know, plowing off in the wintertime. We put those numbers together, and then we just kind of work down our list and try to fit things close, but also fit the budget.
Thank you.
It's never perfect, we're never going to.
Putting together a puzzle without all the pieces.
And we try to maximize and use the money in, in one area, but then you'll have a little bit left, and you just try to pick something that you can fit your, fit your budget with.
In an unusual amount of roads.
Yeah, I mean, we have a hundred and thirty-five miles, centerline miles of road here in this village, we're the largest in Brown County by a long shot, you'd be surprised at how many less road centerline miles other communities have compared to us, so. We got a lot of roads, we have, I think it's like thirty, at a, at a rate of where we calculated our road, roads to be, per foot cost last year, we have like thirty-seven million dollars in roads in this village, so it's a lot to keep up with, and we need to make sure we prioritize that as we move forward with our budgeting, because costs have went up. We used to pay, you know, in the upper forties per foot for roadway, and now it's, it's like fifty-two, fifty-three bucks per foot, so it's, it's going up just like everything else.
And is this, this part of our, this is the largest budget item we have, right?
I'd say police, single item, police, fire.
And then the, the roads?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, many years ago, roads were borrowed for, were paid for by borrowing, thank goodness we got out of that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'd look for a motion. I'll offer a motion to approve contract S two five zero one, the two thousand twenty-five roadway reconstruction projects, project using funds from the Road Reconstruction Fund.
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews to that motion. Any other further questions or discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Absolutely. Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Last item this evening, discussion on future agenda items, anyone with future agenda items? Nothing? If there aren't any, then I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Trustee Andrews has offered a motion to adjourn in the evening, and Trustee Romes has seconded that item. Any other further questions, comments, or discussion from the board? None? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? Motion carried seven to zero, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.